Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. And welcome everybody for joining us tonight. Number three, agenda approval.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number four, introduction of Fred Carter for purpose of sharing about new superintendent training.
If Dr. Carter, if you'd like, you can come over to the table there.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. It's a privilege and pleasure to be here this evening. I apologize, I traditionally and normally attend a regular board meeting, but we have 21 new superintendents this cohort, and I have to go to all their board meetings, so some are scheduled on the same night, so they will come, please. I'm a retired superintendent, I live in Bowling Green, and for the first year after retirement, I was deputy secretary of the education cabinet for Kentucky, and in the last few years, I've been working on new superintendent training program. I was actually, don't hold this against me, but I was Kevin Hubbs' executive coach when he was a new superintendent, Logan Kennedy, that's how it works, so I'm not responsible for anything good or bad that he's done here.
Well, he did a wonderful job for us, so we appreciate that.
So, but I've worked with, I've had the pleasure of working with this cohort, 225 new superintendents, and that shows you how frequently they change. We already have about 20 vacancies for next year, and that's going to grow to about 25 or 30 by the time the dust settles. And part of the problem is the COVID situation. It's just so hard to be a superintendent now, it's hard to be a board member now, because that's a controversial subject, no matter which side you come down on. And in attending board meetings, I've seen some interesting board meetings the last few weeks. But hopefully, we're about to see the end of that controversy, and I think the numbers are all trending in the right direction in most places in Kentucky right now. So, in terms of new superintendent training, you would not be surprised to learn that you hired well, you have Mr. Parker's doing an excellent job, he's representing Scott County well, and all the new training that we do together. We spend a lot of time together this year, we have 17 days when he's out of the district and training with the other new superintendents. Those are in Frankfurt, and Lexington, and Louisville, various places. And then there's four days that I'm visiting with him in the district, so if you total those, we're together 21 days this year. And so next year, he's missing 21 days from working with you guys this year, but next year if he misses 21 days, you need to go looking for him, he's probably not with me.
We know that the training's over.
He's gonna be an honor graduate, I'm sure. He's, like I say, he's representing well, he's on time with all his written work, and e-portfolio work, and all the other things he has to do, his 30, 60, 90 day plan, his professional road plan, all those things that are part of the training. One final thing, which I will be back for that, and you guys actually said that, you need to decide sometime prior to May or June, when you'd like to have a special call board meeting just for his capstone. And his capstone will be a presentation of those seven standards that you're evaluating him on. And so ideally, what would happen is you'd have a special call board meeting, he would do his capstone presentation, the board has to be here and hear that, I have to be here and hear that, and his mentor, Mark Cott, from Franklin County, has to be here and hear that. After he completes his capstone, and after Diana and Mark and I sign off on the official paperwork, which renews his superintendent certification, then we would, Mark and I would actually leave, and you guys as a board would go into closed session and do his year end evaluation, because that'd be fresh on your mind, he just talked about those seven standards, so you'd have that information with you.
We just had your presentation.
So that would be ideal, but again, that's your call. If you want to tag that on to a regular call board meeting, it makes for a heck of a long meeting, but that's your choice, whichever way you want to go with it. We'll be together week after next in Frankfurt as part of KSBA. Mr. Parker has to come up two days early, and I'll be there two days early and do some training about various and sundry things. Actually, part of the training is board superintendent relations, and I'll be leading that part of the training, and along with Nick, Dr. Nick Carter from Redmond County. And Ms. Brooker will be there on Friday for a luncheon, which involves the new superintendents, their board representatives on their IOP team, and their mentor superintendents. And so that'll be a very nice occasion, and we'll celebrate some things, and then we'll adjourn at the end of that, and then he becomes actually a part of your board as you move into the KSBA training, for those of you who attend that, I assume most of everyone will be attending that. It's interesting how these in-person conferences are being held. I don't mind telling you, next week I'm attending the AA SA conference, which is a national conference in Nashville, and they actually usually have about 3,000 attendees. This year, they limited to 600, and you have to have a virtual proof of vaccination status on your phone, so you can show them when you check in. And if you don't have that, you have to have, you know, a certificate showing you've just been checked to make sure you know that you're COVID free. So, everybody's following all the safest things they can for these in-person conferences, and luckily, there haven't been outbreaks based on the educational conferences. So, I assume KSBA's probably gonna be very safe and similar type guidelines in terms of mask wearing and that kind of thing, so that's kind of where we are. But that, hopefully, that's all gonna disappear within the next few weeks and months, and we'll get back to it. But again, he's doing a great job. Anyone have any questions about the new superintendent training? Basically, it involves in-time, just-in-time type of training. For example, part of his training that he'll have in the upcoming sessions will deal with things that are happening personnel-wise in February and March in terms of staffing, if he has to give pink slips to anyone, or if he needs to check on the staff allocations and make sure they're in line and everything. There's timelines, times and dates specific for that, and so he's gonna make sure, we're gonna make sure he has all that information handy as those things come up. So, that's my presentation, unless someone has a question about anything I did.
So, I guess one thing that comes to my mind, you know, we all know that Billy's been going to training and, you know, goes to different meetings with you and what have you. Maybe, and I know we did things a little bit differently than what most districts do when we brought Billy aboard, and we still had Dr. Hubb with us. You know, maybe just a little summary of what type of training that you've gone through in the past, you know, few months.
Sure. Well, it ends up being about a day and a half per month, is what it works out to be. And so, when we meet as a group, and in some cases, if COVID numbers have been really high and we had some issues with that, we met virtually, we had some virtual meetings as well. Normally, they're all in person, because you know from your professional meetings that it's just so much better if you can be in person and meet groups and share each other's ideas and read facial expressions and that kind of thing. But basically, what we started out with an introduction to those responsibilities of new superintendents, we talked, again, we started out early with board superintendent relations, because that's a key piece. That is the team that ensures that the success of the district. And board superintendent relations are good, relationships are good, and there's trust involved, and good things are gonna happen for the kids in the district, and that's what we're all about. So, that's actually on the first time we meet, that's part of the agenda. Then the other training, early on, you might not be surprised to learn is about school finance, district finance, because a lot of superintendents come into the superintendent's role not having had a great deal to do with the finance issues of a large district. And so, it's really interesting from my perspective, because one day I'll be working with the superintendent of, well, I was a superintendent mentor for the superintendent of Jefferson County, as well as Fayette County, so we're talking about really large budgets, and the next day I might be working with a superintendent of Carver Independent or Jackson Independent, where you're talking about 502s and a really small budget. But they share some of the same characteristics in terms of budgeting in a larger district. Billy Parker, Al Smith, he probably has more people involved in the finance aspect than some of the smaller districts where the superintendent has to wear a lot of hats and do a lot of that heavy lifting itself. So, he has a lot of people who are experts in that field, but still, he needs to have a basic understanding of how the budget works out, where the money comes from, and where it goes to, and where the dollar goes, as a matter of fact. So, we do a lot of training on finance, we do a lot of training on school law, you know, if the district's gonna be faced with liability or with lawsuits or something like that, he needs to know how to wind his way through those, and he also needs to know how to avoid those, obviously. So, we do a lot of training on school law, we do a lot of training with, in terms of new laws and regulations that come along. We just finished a virtual session this past week with Wayne Young, who's an attorney by trade, and about some of the laws that have already been passed by the new legislature and some that are probably going to pass, you know, what would that, how would that impact school districts? So, we talk about that. We talk about how to mentor new employees, district employees, how to, we were actually having another session coming up next week about how to, not next week, week after next, right before KSBA, and it's how to attract and retain employees, and it will talk about things like working conditions in the district, and selecting mentors for new employees, both classified and certified. People use the thing, certified employees have mentors, but classified employees need mentors just as much. You want your school custodian to match up with a really good custodian instead of naturally migrating to someone who is not really your strongest employee. Same thing with bus drivers, you want them to match up with a cheerful bus driver who's doing a great job every day rather than someone who's just there for the money or whatever. So, we talk about that. And so, every month is something new, and we do dip back frequently on the finance piece, because that's the one that can really get you in hot water in a hurry if you're not on top of that. So, that's how the training works. For trainers, we choose top-notch administrators who are right on the job. For example, our finance piece is usually led by the superintendent of the, not always, Davis County Schools, and he's probably the best finance expert in the state. And so, he can, he's got a large enough district, he can kind of mentor new superintendents through the finance piece. And all of these people who lead with their areas of expertise, the first thing they do is give all the new superintendents their cell phone numbers. So, if there's ever a question during the year, I mean, he's got contacts all over the state. And we spent one session introducing them to KDE folks, like the assistants who are in charge of curriculum, the assistant at the state level who's in charge of finance, the assistant at the state level who's in charge of technology. He actually meets all those folks and has their names and their cell phone numbers. So, if something comes up by the end of the first year of training, he's gonna have all the expertise, hopefully, but also, he's got all the phone numbers of people who are experts in each of those fields, so he can make a quick phone call and get information. And then I always tell him, I'll tell him, again, you'll hear me say this again, when he does his capstone at the end of the year, I say, "I've been your executive coach, and I've been very fortunate to do that, and I'll remain your executive coach until you retire or I die, whichever occurs first, and hopefully, you retire when you pass away." So, that's kind of the way that works. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, speaking to some of those points, you know, the finance sessions, Gina got to come with me to the finance session.
Well, that was good.
Yeah, so they've been really responsive about trying to bring in, you know, they saw that, I guess a few years back, you all decided to do that, and that was a really nice adjustment, because Gina got to come in and we got to talk through some things, and that was, that was excellent, and like you mentioned, Matt Robbins. Having that, and that networking aspect, you cannot, you cannot just begin to explain how big of a help that is. I mean, he reached out about something, we were going, "Hey, I heard you all were doing something with transportation, talk to me about that." So, it works out both ways. And then as far as the executive coach piece, I can say, because there are folks that have been doing it for three, four, five, 10 years, that still will reach out to this guy right here, because he, you know, you just, you gotta have, you gotta have quality people that, you know, nice, even kill, and can give you some common sense from time to time when you need it. So, we do super, super, super appreciate it, for sure.
Well, as you mentioned, that works both ways, and I can tell everyone here, I'll honestly admit, I could be a much better superintendent now than I was when I was an active superintendent, simply because I picked up things from Billy and from everybody I've worked with, best practice. And what I do when I visit here, I pick up best practice ideas, and then when I go to other districts, I say, "Hey, have you thought about how they're doing this over in Scott County? This really works, and consider it, and call Billy, and invite him to see how you can get this thing going." So, we share expertise, that's one thing I'm sure he's discovered, is that when you're a principal, if you're a high school principal, you're so competitive, you want to keep all your secrets. When you're a superintendent, I mean, you still want to win basketball games, you want to have the highest test scores, but anything else, you'll share your secrets. So, he can pick the brains of a lot of people and has already done that.
Speaking of those ideas, the birthday card idea, right there, that's where it came from, that's where it came from.
The, there's about, well, there's about 21 new superintendents this year, there's about, it'll be about 20 something next year, so it rotates over. So, I would say to the board, we get going, keep them happy, work with them, and I'm not talking about in terms of findings, I'm talking about in terms of working relationships. Make sure that you're all communicating well, which I'm sure you are, and it works better when everybody's rolling up in the same direction. I get the feeling that that exact thing has occurred here in Scott County, and I know from talking with Billy, he's got a good staff, a really good staff, which he appreciates, and when he's talking with other superintendents that are training, he's always bragging about you guys. He said, "Well, you know, I don't have to worry about that Scott County, because I got so and so in terms of finance, or transportation, or technology, or whatever." So, you've hired the best of the best here, you've got so much to be proud of, you know, out in the state, everybody's in because of Scott County because of what you've got going on. And I anticipate that this board, this superintendent, that's gonna continue, and that's gonna continue even better. So, set that standard high, other people are looking at you and embracing change themselves based on what you've done.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing. Number five, approve to amend 2021-2022 school calendar.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number six, district maintenance and facilities discussion and updates.
And as you all know, this is our annual presentation, so we have Dwayne Ellison here to share with us, and I've already reached out to all of you about, we've talked a little bit about Tony, and so we've got that kind of spread away, so we're good to go there.
Two, there's basically four areas that we're gonna come talk about. Good to see you guys again.
I think it's smaller, I'm gonna start wearing glasses.
I know. Well, I almost, I almost brought some readers for everybody. The first packet I gave you is kind of just a historical look back. When we first did this, it was 2016, the bigger packet, that was my first ever, hey, here's our list of needs per school, per whatever, that was the first time, that's Dr. Hubb's first year, and we spent a lot of time going school by school and making everything out of there. And I probably at that time didn't, you know, I know I didn't know what I was looking for a lot of times, and so there's a lot of things that weren't even on there, but I thought it'd be neat to look back, how many things we've knocked off the list, per building, per school, per campus, and just so you kind of have that historical look back. The first page in the other packet is how, and some of you also remember that I used to give you a three or four page, big legal size.
Yep.
You know, so we've been able to, I've been able to condense that down to a one-page, you know, so that's neat to see. The snapshot that you can probably, and we've talked about this before, see from that real quickly is, you know, we still have two or three campuses that we all know about that we would want to do the most at. You know, the other campuses have, you know, most of things in place, we've got, you know, the three campuses that we know we would want to do some sort of major renovation, not just summer project type of deal. So, you can kind of see that by that spreadsheet there. And again, I've got the list of, you know, yearly types of things that we always need to be thinking about, and that's kind of getting, you know, more and more, you have to look at that a little bit more and more, because order years are going $3,000 to $8,000. And all those types of equipment, types of things that, you know, typically, you can just muscle through, sometimes in today's world, it's a little bit different. So, just make sure that we always keep up with that and are thinking ahead about understanding where we're at on equipment, HVAC turnover, you know, what buildings are aging to 20 to 25 years, and we've got a whole building full of HVAC equipment, so what's that ratio of, you know, replacement start to look like? You know, you start looking at bigger and bigger units, and like gyms, and libraries, and auditoriums, cafeterias, where they're aging situations. So, just try to put those on there that we are concerned about, and then I gave you the project review from last year, you know, last year we really took on a lot. We did probably more than this, there's probably a few that I left off here, just smaller things that we just did, but quite a few things have wrapped up at several campuses. We really only have two things out of that, that big pot of money that we used last summer, it was actually, or last spring that we kind of started into all that. It's the dang thing that we started the most with, you know, the doors. And it's just been a nightmare trying to get doors. We finally have doors, we have doors on site, but because of issues here and there, and just now, working around kids, it's just tougher. So, scheduling will continue to happen, and we're close at Garth, we're being almost done, we just have the exterior doors there to finish. Access controls are almost completely finished there as well, got a little bit of paint to do then right behind as we do the, finish up the doors. Western Elementary, it's a little tougher, but in those pods, replacing those interior doors, because there's a little bit more construction involved with, you know, and I think most of you all have been in there with me at one time or another, I think, you know, where they've got two doors, they're odd-sized doors, and closing in and putting a normal-sized door in there, just takes a little bit more project, so we've got to do some scheduling after hours, and doing so many of those pods per week. And the calls have been great, and the team's been great over there about working through that. So, I do think, you know, I don't even want to promise spring break, but you know, hopefully by spring break is what I'm hoping, we have that wrapped up, and we'll try to use spring break for any type of, you know, where we don't want kids in the building, maybe for paint or something like that, and try to knock it out. Looking at projects down the road, that maybe is not a, like I say, you know, we know we've got those major renovations, that's kind of outside of the summer project, summer need type of deal. I've got a list of there, I've worked with principals and my team, custodial team, to come up with, you know, our rankings of needs, and, you know, depending on how the budget goes, depending on how things happen in, you know, state legislature, you know, then we'll come back. You know, that's nothing, nothing's set in granite here about what we're gonna do or not do yet. This is our, kind of our first stab at trying to figure out where are we with our priorities, and what can we do, what, you know, how much money is it gonna take to kind of knock off as much as we can? And again, it's so uncertain right now with the budget.
And I think, so in the past, we would, we would come to you with, hey, here's a pretty finite list of what we're really planning on taking on, because we had a general sense of, we can price that out. We can't do that, you know, it's a little bit different. So, you know, I talked with Gina, Gina and I got together, and then we got together with Dwayne, and, you know, so we're looking at about $250,000 that we'll dedicate to these types of projects, and the reality is, it'll just be how far that money, you know, can take us. So, like Dwayne had said, we're in a really good spot though, as you can see, you know, with improvements we've made over the years. So, if we, we have to be a little bit leaner on what we're able to take on this year, I think it'll be all right. Again, we know that we're up against the 18, 19 funding issue still rearing inside of the head, making things a little bit more complicated for Scott County schools than some of our neighbors, so, you know, as we get through that, the news might lighten up a little bit, and we'll be able to do what we're doing.
And I want to say kudos to, you know, the custodial staffs out there that are, you know, keeping things as nice as they can for as long as they can, and that involves things like, you know, changing filters, I reckon, they're really good about that. Doesn't seem like a big deal, but it might get us five more years out of a lot of our equipment.
It's a little show.
Yeah. Yeah, so all those types of things, they take ownership of our buildings, do a great job of cleaning and working overtime like they did for so many months. And then, you know, I've got one of the best maintenance teams in the state, and that's, I'll put them up against anybody. And the big 15 groups are always jealous of my guys and what we do, and how we never hire anything out. They just, yeah, I mean, we get it done, those guys, we've got some new guys, so a big crew does that.
And I would think too, that, I mean, I'm comparing a little bit of apples and oranges here, but, you know, right now, we're really struggling with bus mechanics, and we're seeing that impacting some of what we're able, the volume we're able to handle right now, and that kind of speaks to having that expertise in-house to be able to keep costs down.
Could you tell me what is, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Number 20.
It's a restroom cleaner. It's like a no-touch restroom.
Okay.
I have a similar question. What's a 12 main trucking package?
A truck, a work truck, with a snow package, a blade, and a salt sprayer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. If you don't budget in the package, it's not, you gotta, yeah.
Truck and passenger units, okay.
Right. We're probably gonna try to put a, I put a blade on my truck at the beginning when I first got here, when Zane first gave me that truck, and they laughed about that. Now, I think I'm gonna put a, I think I could put a small sprayer on my truck too, so we're gonna try to see if we can get one of those. There's no sense in me pushing snow and not also salt in there. It's a little bit smaller of Ben, that I, you know, I can't do like the guys have the big ones, so they'll make one of them for good small.
You have a lot of things, I see you driving by all the time downtown, on that tractor, and what kinds of things attached to it?
And then can you talk a little bit about 15 path, the tennis court?
Just, it's a small thing, but we gotta build a little bit of color and make a walking path. Right now, our kids at Greg Crossley walk to the tennis courts, or our entrances don't line up, we're walking on the road a lot. So, I'm gonna make a walking path, and it's not a huge, it's a little bit more than you would think to make a path, you know, just not a hole, but you gotta have a color and stuff like that to go through there, and make it undrivable, you know, I don't want cars gonna do it. So, it might be some bollards or something like that. So, just so the kids can go directly across.
So, it'd be right across from their entrance.
To line up to.
Right, so they're not walking in the streets.
Didn't we do that with the original design anyhow, that it was supposed to be open, but we decided to close it in the interim?
Because we didn't want the traffic, now the traffic would be a mess if it was right there together, you know, especially on a certain ball, you know, ballgame night or something, with a youth league or a tournament or something like that, and do that. So, I like the idea of what we did, it's just, we didn't think through the tennis courts and use by our PE classes.
Yeah, those turned out really nice.
Speaking to that, that speaks to our desire for making sure we're having that full complement of facilities on site.
Right.
We're going to meet in tomorrow, we can maybe even about that issue.
Oh, thank goodness. So, number eight, forgive me that I don't know this answer, but it says install water softener systems at Western and Southern, do we not have them currently?
We don't have them anywhere on our water supply.
Okay.
We have them on our kitchen areas.
Okay.
And we keep going for.
Now, you want to do it to a whole building?
No, I'm going to do, there's a new system out there that I'm going to try at Western and Southern, because those two, I went through, I don't know how many water heaters there already, since I've taken them.
Yeah.
So, we're going to try a new water softener system that kind of plugs right in, right at the water heater.
Sure.
And see how that helps us at those two places on the hard water side of things, and give it a try.
Okay.
So, that's, and we're actually meeting that guy tomorrow to kind of go through some of that.
Yeah, well, good.
Because Western went down again, but I don't know how many times I've replaced the elements of Western or replaced the whole thing.
Yeah.
It just keeps.
It's surprising that's just those two buildings.
I know.
It's funny how one can.
Well, it's not just those two, but those two has been more than those.
Just more than others.
Like I've done Northern, I've done Scott County High School.
Sure.
Those four jump out to me right off the bat. I've done quite a few, Eastern, I've done this too.
This item, this itemized list that you have, I mean, their numbers is based on how you see them?
I kind of, yeah. I, you know, I could be talked one way or the other on some things.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the ranking, I just wondered if that was or.
Well, it's one of those things, well, at this moment, it sounds like, you know, when it's not snowing out, I don't need another truck, you know.
Right, sure, that's not a priority.
But at 5:00 AM, and I'm trying to make sure we're just like, I wish we had one more truck.
Sure, sure.
So, it just depends on the, you know, the time of year and what we have going on.
The one we had too, broke down here recently.
Yeah, mine actually, mine broke down Friday, and the other one with the spreader, we had actually, we ran out, we were running out of salt, because, you know, the county shuts down after they get taken care of, so we were still working Saturday and Sunday, but they were saying we couldn't get salt, so we, but we had a truck break down with salt on it, so we had to take that salt spreader off and put it on a new truck, and roll on with it, so.
What happened to it?
Uh, I can't remember, I'm, I'm not sure what happened to Kevin's, I think the alternator or something, I don't know. On mine, the whole steering column blew up. Luckily, I was in a parking lot, so I literally couldn't.
It's a little bit aging on that.
I couldn't steer.
Yeah, it's one of those, isn't it?
Uh, it's 2004, yeah.
It's got some aging on that.
Yeah, it's been a good truck.
How much would it cost, I was looking, I was trying to compare the two sheets, on this, it doesn't say how much the preschool, those sound panels.
I don't know, I'm meeting Tony tomorrow.
Because I know that they've been asking, I know the eight years I've been on the board, they've been asking for those, and, you know, my children have both went through that preschool, and I know that that is a big, when they're in that cafeteria, that sound, it's.
It's awful.
And Stephanie too, you know, because remember they had that one soft area, and then that's been taken out, and now it's just like, oh.
It's worse now.
I mean, as an adult.
That's why it's number one, it's, it's number one for air reason.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, if we could get that done for them, that would be another thing.
And I was going to do it, just kind of jump in there and do, put panels up, but I was worried that might be a waste of money, because I don't want to do it. So, I got Tony involved and his team, and they're going to, he's actually meeting me tomorrow there, and we were going to look at, all right, where do we place them, you know, what kind of panels, how big a panel, you know, let somebody that knows what they're doing tell me where to put them.
Yeah, I mean, I've been in there while they were.
Oh, it's awful.
Yeah.
And we didn't realize how bad we were going to make it, because they kept saying, we want that stage out of there, we want the stage out of there, and we did a nice job taking it out of there, and gave a lot more air, but boy, it just popped it even more.
Yeah.
It made it really loud. I don't know if you've been there since we took it out?
Uh, no.
Oh, it's, it's worse.
Oh.
I didn't, I didn't, I kind of didn't notice it before, I had to be pointed, you walked in now, it's, yeah.
I mean, I've been in there, you know, I mean, well, that one's twelve.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, then that's, that was the pickup and dismissal area, and I would just like, I don't know how they.
Yes, it's pretty bad.
I mean, I don't know why we could do that one.
That's the, that's the plan.
I guess that's why it's number one.
Right.
Right, I mean, like.
How many times do you reckon you replace the element in a particular tank, or do you have a certain number, and then we're just going to replace the old tank?
Usually after the second or third time, it's, you're thinking about.
I know it's what they suggest, I didn't know if that's what they did.
It depends on the time of the year and the budget too, you know, if I got to squeeze another set in, we might have to go a little more time, but usually two to three times, and then we're looking at a new tank. Because you, and we try to, you know, when you pull the elements out, you try to drain the tank, try to get it all out of there.
Oh, yeah?
And it's mad, yeah, you dig it out, it's awful, and typically, you know, that it's going to fill up quicker, because you're kind of already starting it, you know.
Because you can't get it all, you can't get it all someplace, and you can't get it to add all of it.
Right, you've got a little bit, you know, hole, you're trying to push everything out of it, it's, it's a chore, you know, keeps Billy and Chris talking, they were mad.
It's bad for Billy.
So, and Mason's not looking anymore at the building?
It is not!
You know, I asked that question, didn't I?
Yeah.
It is not!
But you're all going to jinx us all by talking about it!
But I was just going to say, it's maybe the first time we.
I know!
You haven't had, you're taking a side.
Oh, it's going to be bad tomorrow, it's going to be, it's not even going to rain, it's going to be.
Me and Paul were there for a site visit, we were there for a site visit today, and now it's, you know.
Every time I walk in, I'm like, there's some kids are all looking at me, like, what are you looking at?
Like water looking at me?
On your Georgetown metal sheet, in the bottom, you have DFP major renovation, what are you thinking for that?
That, uh, let me see.
On this one?
Oh, the old, that was the old field, the, do the old fields.
Okay.
And that was prior to, and that was prior to the addition, so that was 2016.
Yeah, all these, all that was just kind of comparison stuff, from what we, when we started in 16, where we were thinking.
16, huge list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what? That was like the cellhouse and all that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that.
And so, and we should be starting pretty quickly on the stadium, the bleachers and press box.
Yeah.
And that would leave, that still leaves us some stuff that, you know, DC and I are targeting, scoreboards, new goalposts, you know, hopefully one day a restroom, such a stand, you know, would be really, really nice out there.
Lexson's been there since, what, '7?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, maybe a longer, I think the bleachers were 50.
Yeah, the bleachers are.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
What? People are excited to come down.
When did Georgetown High School open up, what year was that?
That was the 50, am I 56, 54? I get, I get Eastern.
I was trying to hit Dwayne here, so he didn't say it right.
I wouldn't have gone there!
Mike was the first in the room, but she got it pointed out.
I'm going to say, and I'm guessing, just because I get Eastern.
Did it open the same year Scott County? My school opened up in 56.
No.
Scott County opened up 56, that was his first graduate.
I think, what, wasn't it 54?
Yeah.
I want to say 54.
So, the city schools consolidated, and then the county schools consolidated, okay, I didn't, I didn't know.
Does it seem like Eastern's right there at the same time?
Well, I know 56 is Scott County, his mom was first graduate, he thought it was.
I'll, I've got my, I've got the ages on it on my spreadsheet, I can send it.
Well, no big deal, and of course, it might be that major renovation.
Right, it's went through, GMS went through two major renovations that I know of prior, you know, so 2005, 6.
Speaking of GMS, so Aaron Ball, who was Kentucky Teacher of the Year, was that where that money came from?
Yeah, right.
If you get a chance, the next time you're in GMS, go to the library, because the sheet put that money towards, what the, towards the library, it feels like it's, I mean, it feels totally different. Twice as long now.
Right.
Way more wide open, just super, I mean, it's just.
New lighting, we changed the lighting.
She's just thrilled to death with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Speaking of lighting, and I'm sure it's probably in here, I just had to approve it, but the lighting is the library and garden.
Yeah, yeah, the library, the lighting and garden, and the, I was on the building, ceiling tile and garden.
Yeah.
The flooring and hallways, windows, obviously are the biggest, you know, check mark that I want to get in that garden, so.
Also in the library that they, I saw.
The, yeah, the.
Yeah, yeah.
Built the little office thing in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, restrooms, you know, I can, you know, that's why I just said, you know, we'll go in there, we'll go in there and.
Yeah, it's.
It'd be sprinkler systems.
That's kind of one of those, like we talked about, that is more of a big rental project kind of deal, so.
Is it still running though, as one of our most efficient buildings?
Yeah.
Nothing's efficient right now.
Oh, my gosh, I know, I don't even talk about gas.
We don't even know what efficient is, because we don't know what, yeah, the numbers that we're getting are all.
Oh, my gosh, that's crazy.
We don't know who's even, the problem right now is the electric companies can't find meter readers, so all the bills that we're getting in my reports are all skewed, because there are some meters that haven't been read for seven months, or estimated. Right.
That's what they do, catch up.
Right, so we're trying to fight through what's what, you know, and then you see that stuff, and you think, oh, something's wrong with the building.
Right.
Because it's not, you know, so we're going through, trying to find something running that shouldn't be running, you know, looking at tops, looking at everything, looking at scheduling.
Right, they're just going off something that's not.
Yeah, so.
But typically, it is.
Yeah, it always has been.
Yeah, yeah.
Eastern might give a run for its money now, that, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Really, were we, was it that good?
Well, the only thing that kind of hits you there a little bit propane right now, because we went from the big areas being on glue versus now they're being fed by propane.
Yeah.
And where the classrooms are being fed on the loop, so.
Well, the whole even that we had in the ceiling.
Right.
That front to the outside, I mean, that was, that was amazing at Eastern, yeah.
It's been old, strong.
Well, I don't know about that.
Number six. Yeah, you're number six, do you only have one that we need to replace more, or do they never get you one back years ago?
No, we have, we have two charity pickers right now, both of them from 1998.
Oh.
One stays at Scott County High School.
Right.
And the bigger one, so you really.
I really have bad problems reaching situations out there.
And then we've got a smaller one that Andrew and Dusty mostly move around for gym lab.
Right, wherever.
And it's, we've had it repaired several times.
Is this the, is this a truck version that you're looking at, or the inside version?
Inside, inside, and they're, you know, I'm talking about, we've got a lift.
Is it inspected?
Huh?
As old as that is, can you still get it inspected?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just.
This one goes straight out, so it's a one man deal. Now, we've got a nice lift that you guys helped me get when, when our first two, three years here, and that's helped us do it, it's paid for itself easily.
Yeah.
You know, we, we use that all the time.
As much as you use those, it's crazy to.
Dusty and Andrew, I'm just getting nervous about them using that older one that's, you know, 20 something years old.
Well, that's understandable.
And it, I mean, we take and get, you know, all the stuff done to it, but it's just, it doesn't deter, you know, they go repair and look over, and they, they won't put their name on it.
Too old.
Yeah.
That's why I would ask, because I thought when you said 98 on it.
We've got some years, it's, we've got a lot of order.
You know, number seven too, me and Wayne were talking, you know, ceiling, water, parking lots a year, and it's not, that's not really where we need to be on schedule for that, we probably need to be probably like three or four a year, that way we can keep it up to where we're not running into a situation where we've got parking lots deteriorating. So, anyhow, we acknowledge some of it, again, you know, we understand the situation the way it is this year with finances, and I got to say, you know, kudos to Gina for continuing how we, how we've done things with, making sure we're able to plan things out, and Dwayne knows now what kind of money we can put towards these projects versus, I think in the past, maybe it was more of a May, June kind of.
Right, like my first year here, you know, it would be, you know, June roll around, you kind of see what you got left, and you try to finish something out, and, you know, by the time you got started, you're looking at August, September, you know, so if nothing ever got down to them next break, so, then, because then it also became easier to say, well, we're starting to do it, you know, because now we might need that money.
Yeah, plan to plan.
Yeah.
No, that's great. I think we've hit a lot of things that are on this list, so I'm going to ask you, I'm not going to go through the obvious that everybody thinks I'm going to ask. Number 17, I know.
Twenty-one?
Don't make sense, okay, three down from the one we thought you was going to ask.
No, look, right here, look.
I said I got it on there twice for you.
Why, why did you make it there, but I wasn't going to talk about it?
I must have messed up, make sure I got it on there for Diane.
No, I'm not.
I thought it was mistaken, I thought.
No.
No, I was in good mental. That's not my question.
When I went back and reorganized, because the first time I didn't rank it.
I know you guys are setting me up, so that's what I didn't say. So, I just, for the fun of it, just said that, but, but truly.
Which one, 17?
Yeah, number 17, gas line.
There's a, there's just an old line in the kitchen.
Okay.
That's just getting older, and it's, it, we actually, the plumbers and everybody thought it was a sprinkler line.
Okay.
And so, but it was, when we started digging into it, it's a, an old gas line, so since we found it, we called two or three contractors to come take a look at it and replace it, just the age.
Okay, all right, I was just wondering, because we always have all kinds of things going on over there, from the street to the building, and then down there in the cafeteria area, it's just, just walking right there with all those lines down there.
Right.
So.
This is just, and it's not a, it's not a big section, but it is something, you know, we'll have to do, with kids not in the building, shut it down, all that stuff.
Yeah, well, you call me too, and I will be home that way. Since it's two blocks from my house, just let me know.
Yeah.
And, and so also, just so we can hit all these items, I guess, number five, bottle fillers, are we putting them in all of our schools?
Just about.
I've got.
I think it's, you know, I remember Billy and I used to grab them off, I don't know when we first started, because I was always like, can't you just fill your bottle by turning it this way?
Sometimes we're minimalist.
We're bad.
Sure.
And then, and then I had somebody ask me, can, you know, because I think we've made some of them not, you know, not for, not cold, you know, just tap, and I've got questions about, hey, can you make it cold?